To the summit. Okay. Welcome to the San Mateo County Planning Commission Meeting on July 14, 2021. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Hanson.
Here.
Commissioner Santa Cruz.
Here.
Commissioner Ketchum.
Here.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Here.
Here, Ketchum, sorry. That is represented by Monowitz, Fox, and Montes. Thank you.
Next up.
You're two.
Oh. Next on the agenda is oral communications. This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak on any subject that is not on today's agenda. Speakers will be limited to five minutes. First, staff will explain how the public comment process works for our rewrote meeting.
Thank you, Chair. For those attending the meeting on the Zoom video conference, we will be using the raised hand feature in order to work with public comments during the general public comment period. And for those each on the agenda item, I will ask those members of the public who wish to comment to click the raised hand feature to raise and unraise your hand. For those joining by phone, please press star nine to indicate your desire to speak. Please note that members of the public must wait for my prompt in connection with each agenda item before using the raised hand function. For example, you cannot raise your hand at the beginning of a meeting for an item that is later in the meeting. When you hear your name called, I will prompt you to unmute your account and inform you that you may begin speaking. Thank you. And right now, I don't see any hands raised, and I have not received any written correspondence for items not on the agenda, Chair.
So I see one person joined when you're almost finished with your intro. This is a public comment? For items not on the agenda?
Correct.
Okay, no, I mean to these people who are just joining, you know, just wanting to let them know where we are. Okay, so.
I'll give them a couple of seconds just to see if they want to say anything. Okay, seeing none.
Okay, seeing no requests to speak. There are no objections. We will close oral communications and move on to the consent agenda, which includes minutes for April 14, April 28, and May 12. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Still moved.
Second. Roll call, please.
Sorry, there's a new button. Commissioner Gupta.
Aye.
Commissioner Santa Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Hanson.
Aye.
Commissioner Ramirez. Here, Ketchum.
Aye.
Thank you.
Moving on now to the regular agenda, staff will introduce item number one.
Hi, Summer. We have item number one, owner applicant David Morris and Lori Rhodes, file number PLN 2020-00067, location 1490 Cypress Street in Montero, and our project planner is Summer Burleson. You're on mute, Summer?
Sorry, thank you. Good morning. Give me one second to share my screen and... Can you see this?
Yes.
Great.
Yes.
Okay, great. So this first item before you is for the construction of a new single-family residence, extension of a water mainline, and supporting site improvements for a property located at 1490 Cypress Street in Montero. It's in the eastern portion of the Montero area. The project site highlighted here is a little over two-acre parcel. It gets access off of Sunshine Valley Road through a connecting road of Jordan Street, which is shown here. And it's been used as a commercial horse boarding facility for over 30 years and continues to be used as such. There's an existing mobile home residence on the property, which is proposed to be removed. And if you can see my cursor, that's up here in the corner. And there's existing accessory structures mostly related to the horse boarding facility that is ongoing on the property. The location of the star in this photo is where the new residence is proposed. The zoning of the property is RM-CZ-DRCD, and that's a Resource Management Coastal Zone Design Review and Coastal Development Zoning District. And this is just another view from the north side looking at the property. And the property, the confined animal operations is not part of this permit, but it has, as I mentioned, has been ongoing for numerous years and is under a separate, operates under a separate permit. Again, the star in this photo is the location of the proposed residence. And here's another image of the residence site. This was when they had the story polls up for the design review hearing. So the project... The applicants are seeking a coastal development permit, a resource management coastal zone permit, a design review permit, integrating permit. The residence with attached garage is shown here, more or less in the center of the parcel. The residence is 3,190 square feet in size, and the proposed attached three-car garage is 1,433 square feet, forms sort of an L shape here. Site improvements include a fire turnaround onsite in compliance with fire standards, coastide fire standards, a new septic system to serve the residents, hydrant out at the property line here on the west side of the property at the access road entrance, and relocation of a water meter out to the front, well, to the access entrance of the property. Additional improvements, as I mentioned, the water meter and hydrant location out at the entrance, access entrance to the property, and the connecting road from Sunshine Valley Road to the project site, Jordan Street here, a water mainline extension is proposed from Sunshine Valley Road along, running along the north side of Jordan Street to the property. And then some minor road grading and repaving and widening in certain areas to meet fire standards of Jordan Street. Primarily, the grading is located at this front portion of the road in order to meet the 20% grade. So a total of 10 cubic yards of cut and 10 cubic yards of fill is proposed for the roadwork here. Overall, grading includes 845 cubic yards of cut and fill. That breaks down to 610 cubic yards of cut and 235 cubic yards of fill. And those numbers do include the 10 cubic yards of cut and 10 cubic yards of fill for the roadway improvements that I just mentioned. Most of the grading, as shown here, is around the house site specifically in order to accommodate the new residence proposal. This is just some renderings from the applicant of the proposed house. The colors and materials, which I'll mention a little later, are as depicted here in this lower right image. The house itself, I mentioned, is a little over 3,000 square feet, and it includes three bedrooms, two full baths. The center section, which we'll see in some later slides, is elevated or raised, but it is a one-story residence and a three-car garage that's attached that is a little over 1,400 square feet in size. Additionally, some landscaping is proposed primarily right around the residence, as the remaining areas of the two-acre parcel would be maintained as much of it is used for horse operations. Staff has reviewed the project for conformance with all of the applicable policies and plans, including the general plan, the Energy Efficiency Climate Action Plan, the local coastal program, and the zoning regulations, development criteria, and found that the project conforms with each set of policies and standards. Just a couple of key items I want to mention relate to water service. The property or the project would include, as I mentioned, a waterline extension. Water is provided by Montero Water and Sanitary District, and the waterline extension would be located within the urban area of the urban rural boundary within the midcoast, as depicted in these images. The area, the project site specifically, boundaries is located in what's designated as a rural residential area pursuant to the local coastal program, as depicted in the shaded area on the left map here. And the urban rural boundary is identified as the dark, the black dash line in the colored image on the right of the screen here. The property itself, as I mentioned, is just outside of the urban rural boundary. It does abut the urban rural boundary at its access, where the hydrant and water meter will be located for service from Montero Water and Sanitary District. And the waterline extension would come off of, it's, I know, hard to see here, but if you can see this little parcel here is actually the Jordan Street. And so water would come off of Sunshine Valley Road. The waterline would extend within the urban boundary up to the urban rural boundary line, where the water meter and hydrant would be located to continue serving water to the project site. Montero Water and Sanitary is the current or existing water service provider for the property as well. And with regards to visual impacts, here's some images in the background. This is from Sunshine Valley Road. This is Jordan Street. And in the background, as I've circled here, was when they had their story polls up for the design review hearing and of what the visual impacts would be from the nearest public roadways. And they are minimal. It is in the background with, you know, distance and some vegetation and existing development in the foreground. And as I mentioned, it is a ranch-style, low-profile home. So visual impacts would be relatively minimal. Here's just some additional images going down Sunshine Valley Road from where you would potentially be able to see the proposed development once it's constructed. Staff has also reviewed the project for conformance with the development standards of the RM-CZ zoning district, as shown here. The project does conform with the setback requirements, the height, and the maximum residential floor area for the RM-CZ district. Staff has taken the project to the Coastside Design Review Committee. That meeting was held in March of this year, and the Coastside Design Review Committee did recommend approval of the project with some conditions on some minor design changes. And those design changes have already been incorporated into the plans that were included as an attachment to your staff report and are being shown here in this presentation. The Coastside Design Review Committee found the project to conform with the site planning and structure placement standards, the elements of design standards, and landscaping, paving, fencing, lighting, and noise standards. The comments from the Coastside Design Review Committee included that the ranch-style home was designed to fit well into the rural valley area and will maintain a low profile, which was acknowledged and appreciated, and that landscaping, new landscaping will be minimal, but will enhance the residence, and that windows and decking and doors have been located to minimize impacts to neighboring properties. These are just some, the elevations of the residence. Again, these are the same elevations that have been included in the staff report, and these do already incorporate the changes from the Coastside Design Review Committee, which are listed in the staff report. As I mentioned, it is a ranch-style, low-profile. It does have a raised element in the center of the home area for some additional lighting to the residence, but does still sit relatively lower than the maximum height limit. It's a maximum 28-foot height limit, and the residence at the highest peak is proposed at 20, 20 feet. And then the garage extends off of the residence and a different elevation. The color images here are the proposed and proposed colors that were recommended for approval by the Design Review Committee, and they include a gray standing seam metal roof, white trim, and a cottage red exterior with some stone at the, around the base that you'll see here in some of these elevations. Just some additional elevations. This is a garage side, and what would be, I guess, the front of the house. And just a, another color rendering provided by the applicant of the proposed residence fitting into the actual conditions of the site. Staff has also reviewed the project for conformance with the grading ordinance and found that it is in conformance with the findings of a grading permit, which includes that the granting of the permit will not have a significant adverse impact on the environment, that it conforms with the grading standards, and that it's consistent with the general plan. And staff prepared an initial study and mitigated negative declaration to assess environmental impacts to the project and found that any impacts of the project would be temporary in nature, and mitigations have been provided to reduce those impacts to a less-than-significant level. And the project is being conditioned to comply with all standards of the grading ordinance, including erosion control measures, timing of grading operations, and fire safety standards throughout construction. And the project has been found to be consistent with all of applicable policies of the general plan, as discussed throughout the staff report. Staff did make a project referral to the Midcoast Community Council, and the Midcoast Community Council or MCC did provide comments back that the home did appear to be large in size, but does not have imposing bulk, given its low-profile design approach, and that there, they provided comment that new septic system and leach field may contribute to water contamination concerns that have been an issue in the past from the horse operations on the property. And the project, and particularly the new septic system that's proposed, has been reviewed by the Environmental Health Services Division of the county and found to be in conformance with the county's standards for septic systems. The standards that the county holds for septic systems within their onsite waste water treatment system requirements manual is in conformance with state requirements through the state water resources control board and regional water control board for compliance to ensure that septic systems don't create health hazards or nuisances or have any sort of threats to groundwater quality. The project parcel, as I mentioned previously, has been a commercial horse operation for over 30 years. The owners, the current owners, have acquired the property around 2018. And so since then, they've been working on trying to clean the property up and including the new development that's proposed, as well as working on repairs and cleanup of the site with regard to the horse operation that will continue on the property. And the confined animal permit, which is what the horse, commercial horse operation operates under, is currently also under renewal. So staff is looking at that through that separate permitting process as well. The project triggered the need for an initial study and mitigated negative declaration. As I mentioned, staff did prepare that, and that went through a public review period, and no comments were received throughout that public review period or to date on the initial study and mitigated negative declaration, and that's included as an attachment to your staff reports. So staff is recommending that the Planning Commission adopt the mitigated negative declaration and approve the coastal development permit, resource management coastal zone permit, design review permit, and grading permit, county file number PLN 2020-00067, by making the required findings and adopting the conditions of approval in Attachment A of your staff reports. And that concludes my presentation, and staff is available for questions. Thank you.
Sorry, I was muted. Thank you. Do commissioners have questions for staff? We'll start with Commissioner Santa Cruz.
Thank you, Chair, Ketchum. I have only like maybe a couple of observations. The widening of the Jordan Street, as shown on the vignette that you demonstrated, is it necessary because of the truck, the fire truck, or because of the access to the house that is being built?
I guess sort of both. It is a requirement to meet minimum fire access standards for the development by, from the, those standards are set by the Coastside Fire District. So those are the minimum improvements necessary, as required by Coastside Fire.
Okay. And then my second observation that I got kind of lost on this. On one screen on the left, you show the property being located in the rural area, but on the right side, it was located on the urban area. So maybe it had to do with the urban rural designated area, and I want to know what kind of implication would that have?
So the two maps that I had shown, they both did depict the project property in the rural area. I can bring those maps up just to help clarify that. But yeah, they both are in the rural area on the left map, which actually is an attachment to the staff report as well. You could refer to Attachment C, I believe. But the rural, the left map that was shaded black and white showed that that area is designated as rural residential by pursuant to that local coastal program. And the right map that was the colored map showed the black dash line, which essentially, it follows the same kind of rural residential line between the property's western boundary. And so it is in the rural area. The waterline extension will occur within the urban side of the rural, urban rural boundary. So there are LCP policies that speak to utility extensions that they occur within urban areas, and so they're, and not within rural areas. So in this particular case, given the parcel's location at the edge, staff has assessed and determined that this does comply with those policies, as the water extension will be within the urban side of the urban rural boundary and connect to the water meters at that location that will then serve this property. And the LCP policies also speak to situations where, similar to this, where extensions need to occur to serve existing developments that, developments that have existing water service connections. And this is the case for this property. The existing residence is served by Montero Water and Sanitary through public water service. So this will allow, this water extension will allow the water service be provided by Montero Water and Sanitary, comply with regulations, and to continue to serve the proposed development.
Okay. And my last observation regarding deceptive water contamination, can you expand on that? Because it was violation in the past. I heard you saying, but now it's, that you guys review that it's okay now with the construction of the new septic system?
Well, so the Midcoast Community Council raised concerns that there have been past violations through the water board with the, I think primarily related to the confined animal operations on the property and water pollution from, you know, manure and so forth related to that. And I can't speak to, you know, how those past operations have, you know, how well or not they've performed. I just don't have that personal experience. But we have had the, we don't have any violations on record through the county. And the proposed septic system has been reviewed by the county environmental health department, who is kind of, has, you know, the oversight of their standards are through the water board. And they've determined that, the county environmental health services has determined that the system complies with all standards to ensure that there's, it's going to, you know, function properly. It's in a proper location, meets setbacks in order to minimize groundwater contamination from sewage systems.
Okay. Thank you, Summer. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gupta? Commissioner Gupta.
Thank you, Chair. Um, uh following. Kind of going along the same lines about water contamination uh and things. So, do the neighboring properties also are uh horse properties?
Uh, I, the immediate neighbors um are residential. Uh, just single family residential. Um, I'm not aware that they um have horse operations. As this this property does. There are some horse operations in the vicinity, but not immediately adjacent to this property.
Not immediately, right, okay. Um. So, and you said county has no record of any violations in the past uh on this property?
Like, the county, we do not have any uh records of past violations. And we did um consult with the environmental health services division as well um in their review. When we received the MCC comments and passes on to them to make sure that they were um, were fully aware of the concerns. Um, uh in consideration of their of their review.
Okay, thank you. Um, another thing that uh. I read was that this is a high risk fire area. Um, and I believe we even got some correspondence on that, somebody complaining about that. Uh, um, is there anything special that's being done? Uh, to prevent uh like to contain any fire issues?
They are in a high fire hazard severity zone area as uh mapped by CAL FIRE. Um, I'm not aware of any um comments received about concerns relative to that for this project. Um, that I've seen. Um, but the Coastside Fire Protection District has reviewed and conditionally approved the project. Uh, relative to um fire standards, which includes consideration. That it is in a high fire hazard severity zone, and they'll be required to comply with uh certain chapters of code. Um, I think it's chapter seven A um for um non combustible materials. Um, as well as um proper vegetation clearances from around structures. Um, those are standards set by fire um for these types of areas, and they will be required to comply with those standards.
Okay, then thank you, and uh one more question is. Uh, there's a mention of rupture of earthquake fault. So, is this uh parcel sitting on a earthquake fault?
Uh, no, it's not. Um, there are, of course, um earthquake faults. Within the mid coast area, and there's the Seal Cove Fault and and probably some others. But um based on the geotechnical reports for the property or for the project. Um, this is not uh encumbered by a a fault uh running through the property.
Okay, um, so, so because that area in general has uh earthquake faults. So are there any special foundation requirements for um for this kind of construction?
Uh, depending on the um, I guess, location of the faults. Or the project site relative to the location of any nearby faults. There would be recommendations through the geotechnical report for, you know, an adequate. Um, foundation system, and that would be uh reviewed. As part of the building permits supplemental through our building and geotechnical sections to um. One, review the findings um of the consulting geotechnical and recommendations. And to ensure that it meets all code requirements.
Okay, okay. Uh, and my last question is about what would be the duration of this project?
In terms of construction duration?
Construction, right.
I would need to defer that to the applicants.
Um, we'll come back.
If you may, yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Summer.
Commissioner Hanson.
Morning, Summer. A couple of questions. One, about the landscape use of the design. Coastal design people reviewed and had recommendations. Um, those recommendations and. Do they, do they talk about the heavily bamboo? Is that still in the landscape plans?
That is still in the landscape plans um as as proposed. The design review committee did review the landscaping and did not provide any conditions, comments. Or changes on the landscaping proposal um that you're seeing today, other than um to note that. Um, the um, it was mostly, the property was mostly going to be kept. Um, in, you know, its natural state with um landscaping right around the immediate house too, that would, they felt would. Um, would enhance the the residence itself, but no other comments or um. Proposed modifications were provided by the design review committee.
Department of Agriculture lists heavily bamboo as highly invasive, so is is there any plans to contain it? It also listed as being toxic to birds, cats and dogs. Uh, that may not be a problem this na- uh lot, but the invasiveness might be.
Uh, that would, in terms of management of it, I would probably need to defer that to the applicants. To to see how they plan to, um what considerations they have for management of it.
Okay, um, conditions of eight and nine, if I remember correctly. Talks about uh the word inadvertently discovered. For artifacts, let's say basically from the Indian period or the Portola expedition. Uh, now I was just wondering why the word inadvertently as opposed to just discovery. So if they knew about it, they would, they don't have to do any mitigation measures or?
No, um, I I uh that maybe improperly uh uh worded. But it is intended to mean um we're not aware of any um at this moment. But in the um event that something is discovered without, you know, that's not known today. That's what that word was intended to mean.
So there's no reason to have the word inadvertently in there?
Uh, no, it could just be um.
Any discovery.
Any discoveries, sure.
Yeah.
It would be the same, yes.
That's all I needed to know. Thank you very much.
Yes, thanks.
And I'm I'm done with my questions.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Uh, yeah, a couple of questions here. Um, first, uh, what is the current size of the uh? The water main that supplies um the uh the property at the moment?
Uh, I that I would need to defer to the applicant. I don't know. I know they have a five eighths inch meter. And that's what they will be replacing at the property line is a five eighths inch meter, so same service meter. Um, I don't know what the existing line is.
Okay, um, so what's the reason for such a a large uh size of uh water line? That is coming in, uh it's a six inch line. Um, does the, does the property require that much water? Um, so I I would like for the owner to address some of that uh when he comes on. Um, the second, um, is is the house going to be as exclusively by the owners? Um, or is there any farmhouseing on site? I assume that they have uh workers. Uh, do they have a a place for for them, or do they commute uh in for work? Um, so those are my questions.
I, yeah, I uh will just mention, and then um I I I will need to defer to the applicant. But um the water mainline extension um sizing is a requirement by Montero Water and Sanitary District. Um, so they set the requirements for um design and and of the. The water main extension, and that's the requirement set by Montero Water and Sanitary District. I'm not aware that they have any um farm labor housing. Um, usually um commercial uh horse operations aren't um considered. Um, farming for purposes of of farm labor housing. Uh, qualifying for farm labor housing, um so I'm not aware that they have or would have any. Um, how additional housing other than the the residents that will be used by the owners of the site. But I'll defer to the applicant to clarify further.
Okay, all right, that's it for me. Thank you.
Okay, I I have uh one question about why is the address on Cypress Street if there's no entrance there? I mean, I noticed that uh it's from, even the fire access is from Sunshine Valley. It just would seem to be, might be a, come a hazard, confusing.
Yes, um, that's a good question. I uh, as I was putting the presentation together, I also was. Was uh wondering that, um, and um, I I don't know. Um, it has been the address for the property that we have on record, um, you know, um, for years. But um with the new house, I can say that um coast side fire does weigh in in regards to addressing. And if a new address, particularly now that um, you know, coast side fire is requiring um access improvements. Along Jordan from Sunshine Valley Road, um coast side fire um certainly has the ability. And may um in this case um request um or require that a new addressing be assigned. Through the building department, and um we would certainly do that um upon their request. And notify all of the emergency services of the revised address, which again uh may very well be the the case here. It would be dependent on fire, fires review.
Thank you. Uh, so at this point, um, does the applicant have a presentation or want to add anything to? Um, this is your time. You may have up to fifteen minutes.
Thank you, I'd like to, uh, it's my wife, Laura.
Hello.
I'm Dave Morris, and um. I would like to thank Summer for excellent presentation. Uh, she came into this project a little late because our original planner uh was someone else. And she got handed it kind of on a hot plate, but anyway, um, let's see, as far as, let me just go through the items. That we, I wrote down here, fire, uh you were concerned about fire. So uh the whole house is designed around fire. Um, the steel panel roofs uh are insulated with five inches of foam between. And a steel panel on the bottom and top of the um. Uh, foam, and that is to eliminate any attic space. Because as we know, embers can enter an attic and then cause, you know, through the ventilation that's required for the attic. And then cause the fire to start uh up in the attic where it really can't be accessed. So that's one reason we went with steel panels. Um, the other thing is the steel panels themselves will never catch on fire by embers uh from fires. We are basically at the front lines of the fire. Um, that will eventually happen uh back here in the Golden Gate National Recreation Area, up in the hillside. Um, I think it's just a matter of time. Um, so with that being said, that's also why we want the water main extension to come down to the corner of our property. So that we can have a fire hydrant uh right here to protect our house as well as our neighbor's house. Um, Montero Water District was the one that decided the size needed to be six inches coming down through there. That's apparently their minimum size. Um, so anyway, that's that. For earthquake, uh the house is made with steel frames, uh red steel frame construction, and um. It would be built like a skyscraper. Um, again, we don't have any heavy weight up on top. It's the light steel foam panels up on the roof. So we don't have the heavy weight up on top. The whole building should be able to shake and wiggle with any earthquake. It's going to be pinned to the ground with uh ten foot deep twenty four inch piers at each one of the connecting points where the red beams come down. And um that's all designed into the uh by the GeoTech uh company. Um, we are sitting on decomposed granite up there where it's at, and it's going to be cut down into the hillside. Uh, at the back of the garage, approximately five feet into the hillside back there to lower the profile of the whole home. And not raise it up higher, as well as to make use of the earth that's coming out to be the fill for the earth coming in. And um, let's see, um. We have uh water um. Water quality. Uh, we have a fellow that comes around, he's been coming around every year uh after rainstorms. And he takes samples in the creek down here below us, or with a little water runoff below us. And I've asked him every time, hey, are you having any issues with any water quality uh up here? And um he says, no, we we don't see any, any problems with your water quality up here, but we're getting it down. Uh, down closer into the moss beach area. Now, there are several homes. As well as a couple of horse facilities going down the creek from here. Um, and um, so anyway, they tried to locate where it's actually coming from, and and I haven't. Ever been told it was coming from us. We have all of our uh manure waste put into a concrete bunker. That's covered with a steel roof, and uh I haul it off every time the concrete bunker gets uh to the point where it's full. Enough that uh if it were to rain, it would get on it, and it goes down to Pescadero to a large ranch down there. That's doing soil reclamation and trying to rebuild their soils, and they like our manure because it's mainly manure and not um wood shavings. So none of our manure stays on property and, and I have moved the runoff to where. Whenever we took over the ranch, I took all the runoff and ran it through grassy areas and then through sand burns. Before our runoff goes into the creek. Um, and GGNR A is who we lease uh the piece of property below us. From Golden Gate National Recreation Area, which controls all that area back there. And um, they have had their uh teams of uh water engineers, hydrologists. And environmental guys and all that out here looking it over, and they're all very pleased with uh, and we get that inspection about once a year. They're very pleased with what they see as far as the operation is concerned. We don't have any horse pens within thirty feet of the creek anymore. Those have all been taken out, and um, and that's about it for that. Um. Let's see, as far as the bamboo, um, I pulled those. First off, we have about eight to ten deer out here in the yard every morning, evening. Um, so pretty much everything that uh lives is going to be planted on the property has to live by Darwin's Law. And um, so uh the bamboo was one of the things. Okay, first off, our last omenel granada, our neighbor had bamboo. I had artificial turf, and I had a little tents where the bamboo is coming up under my artificial turf. And I worked my tail off to get rid of that bamboo. So there is no way in God's green earth I will ever plant anything like that that is invasive. Or that will uh spread uncontained uh on this plant. So, anyway, uh if this bamboo is of any concern, I will gladly take it off the plans. Um, and um, I looked at it, and it was something that was on other plans. And it looked like it was an approved thing here, and it looked like it would be resistant to the deer eating it. And that's the reason we use that as one of our minimal uh plantings around the house. I have minimal plantings around the house. Uh, A, because I'm not a gardener, and I don't sit out there tinkering with my flowers all day long and busy working a ranch. Um, and we, we are not gonna spend a bunch of money on water and so forth to water a bunch of plants. So they basically have to live on their own out here. We don't water our yard as it is now, and uh, you know, when we're done riding, a lot of times. We let our horse loose and go let them chew down some of the grass here and there, and then put them back in the pasture, and um, that's that. Uh, let's see. Water main extension I talked about workers. We don't have any workers on our property. Our ranch is not a full service ranch and we like it that way. We require our boarders to come clean after their horses at least three times a week. Reason we do that is because we want people that are involved with our horses as opposed to someone who shows up here once a month to ride their horse and wonders why their horse is lame or whatever. We want people who are out here actively involved with their horses. We don't want just horse owners. We want horse riders and and people involved with their horses. And we live on this ranch ourselves in the double wide that's going to be going away. And so therefore we uh we also enjoy people that um we enjoy, you know, we we enjoy our community of horse people out here and that's uh that's part of our enjoyment. So that's reason we don't have any workers that actually uh work for us or live on the property. Duration, what's duration?
Project?
Oh. Excuse me. Duration of project. This will be my fifth home that I've built by myself and um this one I expect will go up a little bit faster because of the big steel frames and the framework going up on it. And um I would imagine that the house will be completed within two years uh of the time of start. Depending on how bad my wife gets after me about that, but in that process, I also have to take down the mobile home that we're living in, which will be done toward the end of the process. And I also have to take down a long um farm building that is up against the west side of our property uh that is also a requirement uh by planning. So that's that. Can't read it. Oh, new address. Yeah, that'd be great. Okay, our new address. The reason, this is my uh expectation of why our address is fourteen ninety Cypress is because this is actually made up of uh was three parcels when we bought it. We tried to combine it all into one parcel. Uh parcel number. But the little driveway extension is a is in a separate tax district than what our main property is. And so therefore they would not allow that property to be combined under the same parcel number. That being said, the only road that actually touches the main parcel number is Cypress Street in the back of the property. That is a paper street. Uh, you couldn't get through there with uh except anything about a D eight bulldozer. There's big trees all through it and so forth, and there is no road back there. It is just a paper street. And that is the reason I believe the property was given fourteen ninety Cypress. That has caused us headache from day one getting parcels from UPS and FedEx because they can't drive down fourteen ninety site to fourteen ninety Cypress. And so I would expect and I would hope that we would end up with either a Jordan or an Ivy address as part of uh the water main extension process and the building process and fire process. Uh, the other thing that I was gonna mention was the widening of Jordan Street is not actually a widening of the street. It's a widening of the pavement. Uh, the pavement is probably about twelve feet, maybe fourteen feet wide right now. And it's supposed to be twenty feet wide minimum for the fire department. And so that's just gonna extend out to the edges of the boundaries of the road itself and that'll give us our twenty feet. And then the little bit of grading up there is uh, there's a concrete entryway that uh I installed with permits when we first got here because the potholes were so bad coming in, I would get stuck going out with the dump trailer uh to haul manure out. And so I had that, I concreted all that area up there and it's at a twenty-one percent grade and the fire department requires a twenty percent grade. So I have to add a little bit of fill in that one little area there up in the front and re-re pave all that as I do. So um, that's pretty much all I've got. Go ahead.
Thank you. So uh, do commissioners have any follow-up questions with the applicant? We'll start again with Commissioner Santa Cruz.
No, I don't have any follow-up question. I I think the project sounds fine and has a great presentation for the owner.
Commissioner Gupta.
Yes, just one question. Um, uh, thank you, Mr. Morris, for the addressing the duration of the project. It's it's commendable that this is your fifth one that you are building. My just more for information sake, wha- what service do you provide for the horses? You said uh three, uh, the owners are expected to come out there several times a week and thing. So uh, what what is it that's provided by you?
So currently what we provide is feeding the horses in the morning and the evening. So Dave and I do that ourselves. We provide um any type of repairs to waters, fencing, et cetera. Uh, we arrange for vet service and dental services onsite. We do clinics, uh, we uh maintain an arena, a round pen. Our trails within the ranch we maintain. Uh, also road and parking in and out of the ranch. So all and trash service and manure removal. So what the owners get is everything minus the actual care of their horses. Cleaning uh manure removal and they come out, they exercise their horses, they groom them. So.
Okay, okay. So so they can, they can exercise their horses on on the on your uh property?
Correct. We've got, we've got a large arena and a round pen. That's all on our GGNR A uh leased lands. And we have currently have a ten-year existing lease with GGNR A that we will plan to phase out uh at the end of that ten years. Um, we're nine, nine years out from that. Will be seventy by then, so we we um want to start uh bringing down the operation, the horse operation at that time. So.
Okay. So so at this time with this uh new residence for yourself, you are not planning to expand on the number of horses. Uh, you would be uh that would be boarding there?
Correct. We we've actually reduced the number of horses and pens we have. We like the number we have right now. We're we're kind of at a break even point on our expenses, uh but we don't plan to expand horse operations at all here.
Okay.
Thank you. Good luck.
Commissioner Hanson.
No further questions. Thank you very much for your time.
Commissioner Ramirez.
No further questions and the same thanks to the uh owners uh for providing the answers.
So I have, um, let's see. Oh. Uh, now we'll open public comments. And I'll turn this portion over to Ms. Luhon.
Thank you, Chair. We're now opening public comments for item number one. If your hand is raised, your name will be called for this item. I will lower your hand after you speak. Those joining by telephone can press star nine to raise and unraise your hand. So let's give it a few um seconds and see if anybody raises their hand. Once again, this is for item number one. And I don't see any hands raised, Chair.
Okay, seeing that no members of the public wish to speak, the public comment on this item is now closed. Does uh staff any have any uh items you wanted to? Just I guess not. So um now we'll move on to.
Yes, I'll take that opportunity to catch him. I was intrigued by Commissioner Hanson's questions about heavenly bamboo. I mean, I thought maybe you might address that. Uh, my experience with it is it's a common ornamental that does pretty well in our climate drought resistance. From what I've seen, it doesn't really spread here. I did a little bit of research. And it's more invasive in the southern eastern United States, so um I wouldn't consider it a species of concern and it's not your typical bamboo. It's got that name because of its appearance, but it's not the typical spreading bamboo that when you think of bamboo, it's a different type of plant. So.
How about the toxicity with the cyanide in the berries?
Well, yeah, it's interesting. Um, one of the way it spreads is because the birds eat the berries and then they fly away and then they, you know, poop out the berries and then it spreads. So it's apparently not toxic to birds. I didn't see any warnings about toxicity in my research of it and my neighbors have it and they have a bunch of cats outside, so I don't expect it to be problematic.
Okay, so we get mixed results in the West Coast as compared to the East Coast. Thank you.
Sure. So now we move on to Commissioner comments and deliberation. And uh, once again, we'll start with Commissioner Santa Cruz.
No, I don't have any further comments or anything like that. I'm I'm ready to propose a motion.
Commissioner Gupta.
No, I'm in support of the project. The report is excellent. Thank you, Summer, for that and I appreciate owners coming out and addressing our concerns. So thank you.
Commissioner Hanson.
I'm in support of this project and I have no further comments.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Uh, same here. I'm in support and uh I just want to thank the owners for um their effort that they're putting into to to make this um, you know, a better place uh from what it's been in the past. I think they've done a good job. So I'm I'm totally in support.
I'm totally in support as well and and as a as someone who used to board horses in Moss Beach and and enjoy the area to ride, it's a wonderful business model, this the whole operation. So glad that you're carrying it on. And your home looks lovely. Okay, so we're ready for a motion?
Yes, I'm ready for a motion that the Planning Commission adopt the mitigating negative declaration and approve the coastal development permit. Resource Management Coastal Zone Permit, Design Review Permit and Grading Permit. Conti File Number PLN two thousand twenty zero 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 six seven by making the required finding and adopting the condition of approval in Attachment A.
A second now.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please. Hi.
Commissioner Santa Cruz.
Hi.
Commissioner Hanson.
Hi.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Hi.
Your ketchup?
Hi.
Motion passive.
Motion is approved unanimously. Moving on now to agenda item number two.
Thank you all very much from the owners and thank you, Summer, for taking care of this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have item number two. Owner, San Mateo County Parks Department, applicant, Gates and Associates, Dylan Butterball. File number PLN two zero two one dash zero 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 nine six. Location, Santa Maria Avenue and Columbus Street in El Granada and our project planner is Mike Schaller.
Uh, good morning, Commissioners. Um, let me get my presentation up here. Now there it is. Okay, uh, so the item for you, um, uh, the applicant, San Mateo County Parks Department is proposing to construct a BMX pump track within the county's Quarry Park property. Um, now, to familiar familiarize you with the location, the Quarry Park property is located on the northwest side of El Granada. That's basically the entire air, all the area in white here. On the rural side of the urban rural boundary, it's composed of the original rock quarry. Called Quarry Park, of course, as well as the Wicklow Edition, which is this larger area surrounding the original quarry. And the Marotta Surf East and West Properties. Um, all of these pieces of land were acquired at different times by the county parks system, but they are managed as as one unit. The area where the pump track is proposed is an open meadow area in the lower portion of Quarry Park. And it's the area here in in yellow. Uh, this area is dominated by non-native annual grasses. And surrounding the meadow on the north, east and west side are uh dense stands of non-native eucalyptus forest. To the south lies the entry roads, uh Santa Maria Avenue and then the entry road into the park. Uh, and parking for uh for Quarry Park itself is located right here as well as an existing uh playground and picnic area. Uh, a bathroom facility located right there and an existing community garden located right here. There is also um, Bank Parks maintains a uh a maintenance building to store their maintenance equipment um at this location here. The meadow area where the track is is proposed has a gentle slope of just under three percent. Uh, approximately two hundred feet to the west of the proposed track lies an intermittent stream channel indicated here in blue. Uh, vegetation around the stream channel is dominated by eucalyptus trees as you can see. So the pump track will be constructed entirely out of compacted earth and will consist of a sequence of bank turns and rollers. So bank turns here and roll and series of rollers in and around. To allow riders to to traverse the track without pedaling. In addition to dirt trails, the pump track will feature several skills components that will be made out of stone, wood and metal. That's in these areas indicated indicated over here. The pump track will be separated into three separate skill levels, including a perimeter skills trail, a beginner track and an intermediate track in order to provide a range of experiences for riders. The footprint of the proposed track will be just under one acre in size and grading to construct the track is estimated at approximately eight hundred cubic yards. Uh, most of the material will be kept onsite. Um, the applicants believe they can only, but they'll only need to import a small amount of additional material in order to construct the the track as proposed. Uh, no trees are proposed for removal as part of this project. Other amenities will include a bike fix-it station, picnic tables and perimeter gates and fencing to match that which is used within Quarry Park. Clear signage will be provided uh to ensure the pump track rules and expectations are understood by all users. Now, uh, for those who view who are for not, who are not familiar with what a pump track looks like, I scoured the internet and came up with a few examples uh that I hope will uh illustrate uh what we're talking about here. This one is actually a very small one that somebody built in their backyard, but it does illustrate uh the basic principles of a bank, the bank turns and the rollers uh features. Um, obviously, this is far under one acre, so um what the what Parks is proposing is is obviously much larger than this. This is a an example of a small pump track in the community uh in Philadelphia. And I think it helps illustrate the community, community oriented nature of the proposed track. Um, again, this and this one's a little bit is gonna be smaller than than the size of the track that's proposed by County Parks, but it does illustrate kind of the the real uh community-based nature of of the use. Um, and and it's really geared particularly for younger riders, um, not so much for adults, but more for smaller uh children orienting out of playing on traditional playgrounds who, you know, want to do something other than play your traditional ball sports like baseball and baseball and football, et cetera. So and it's also a great place for parents to take their kids and to and participate with them doing this type of activity. Now, as discussed at the beginning of your staff report, the planning process uh that has resulted in today's proposal started almost twenty years ago with the Midcoast Recreation Needs Assessment and progressed through several additional studies and surveys. Starting in twenty seventeen. The Parks Department hosted a series of community workshops aimed at developing a master plan for Quarry Park. A lack of recreational opportunities for older kids was identified with the pump track being proposed as a moderate intensity used to address this need. Several different locations and sizes of track were proposed before the current project was refined by the Parks Department. And submitted to the planning department for a coastal development permit. I just wanted to emphasize that this, what you see today, uh, being proposed today has gone through a lengthy community, um, workshop process. Um, getting back to, uh, the LCP compliance portion of the staff report. Uh, as discussed in your staff report, there are sensitive habitat areas within the Quarry Park property. However, the nearest such area is an intermittent stream channel approximately, as I mentioned previously, approximately two hundred feet to the west of the project site. The most westerly edge of the proposed work area, um, which kind of actually butts up against this existing gravel. Uh, access road that takes you to the, to the corporate yard area. Uh, at this location, it's still approximately sixty feet away from the limits of riparian vegetation. Uh, for this stream channel, uh, this is well outside of the required buffer zones, uh, contained in the LCP policies. Uh, there is no evidence to suggest that the project as proposed and conditioned will have a negative effect upon the biotic resources in Quarry Park. Uh, with regards to the policies in the recreation chapter of the LCP. Staff believes that this is an appropriate use for this portion of Quarry Park. Because the open space area surrounding the proposed track will provide a buffer from adjacent residential uses, which can see our, uh, here, uh, actually. This area here, these houses along El Granada Boulevard are at a higher elevation. There's a, a reasonably steep hillside that drops down to the core, uh, to this, uh, meadow area. And then, of course, there's intervening, the intervening, um, eucalyptus grove that shields. This area from, uh, at least partially shields this area from, uh, from the houses. The, this buffer zone combined with intervening vegetation will help reduce potential noise impacts upon the adjacent residences. Uh, additionally, there is existing parking and bathroom facilities, which we mentioned previously. Um, nearby that will help address use of the park by residents who do not live in the immediate area. This location will also will not obstruct views from the surrounding parkland or conflict with scenic corridor policies contained in the LCP. So in closing, staff is recommending approval of this project subject to the required findings and conditions of approval. Identified in attachment A of your report. Are there any questions I can answer for the commissioners at this time?
I have a question.
Yes.
Okay, um. Uh, Mr. Chadler, uh, thank you for your presentation. This, uh, pump, uh, pump park. The idea that the, uh, parking commission decided to create this area for, uh, mostly for kids or teenager. Why has been decided to do it over there where, uh, twenty-one percent of population of El Granada is under age eighteen? And almost sixty percent of population is over sixty or fifty.
I, I'm not sure if I follow your question. Is the question about why did they choose to put the park or put this track at that location or whether they, to build one at all?
Okay, m- my more specific question is why spending so much money in building this where only twenty percent of population of El Granada? Is under age eighteen and almost sixty percent of population is over fifty?
Uh, well, so, and I'll, um, I know that Nicholas Calderon, the Parks Department Director is, um. Also available to answer this question, but, um, as I pointed out, uh, in the previous, one of the previous slides, there were a series of workshops that were. Conducted by the Parks Department and, um, members, people who attended and participated in that. Planning process identified this as something they need. You know, I, as you could think of. A larger question is what, what is the role of, of the county in providing, um. Recreational opportunities to the entirety of, of the community and not just one segment. You know, uh, one of the things that we have heard. In planning, and I'm sure Parks has heard as well, is that there's just a lack of recreational opportunities for younger people. Uh, for kids in the mid-coast area in general. There's lots of open space area that's owned by GG NRA, by, uh, state parks. But there are, uh, there's a, a lack of facilities that are oriented towards the younger population who perhaps. Don't find going on long hikes with their, with their parents all that exciting. I know I've got a fifteen-year-old and I can tell you that for fact right now. So. Uh, I, I think, you know, this is an attempt by the Parks Department to address what has been identified as a need by members of the community. And I think Nicholas probably could provide more, um, a more detailed response on that as well as, you know, the funding source. Uh, for this product.
Okay, I'd like to hear more about it because I've seen that there is other opportunities, uh, like, uh, basketball field, soccer field, track. Or any other things that are directed to more diverse racially diverse population. Uh, versus the, the pump track that is mostly geared toward one section of racially, uh, uh, one, one, one section of a race of a population, you know? Instead of that, then I'm not being critical of your presentation. I'm just raising my concern.
Hmm, well, I think also, uh, with regards to this use at that location. Whether. I do know from looking at the, the documents that provided by Parks Department regarding the workshops, the, the draft management plan. Management plan for Quarry Park that, um. On many of the workshops. More intensive or types of uses such as basketball courts and whatnot were not typically supported by the people who participated in that, in that process. Um, I know there were some other proposed uses that, um, that came, uh, that were at least initially proposed that. Uh, throughout that workshop process eventually were, um, not, didn't really receive sufficient, sufficient support. Uh, to move forward, but as with regards to other types of, you know, soccer fields, basketball courts, other types of uses. I would probably, I would agree with you, um, as a, as an observer, not somebody who lives in that community, but just from my own. Ob- observations of working in the planning department for over twenty years here and observing the, the mid-coast. Uh, I would agree, there is a lack of those facilities in the mid-coast area. And I think probably, um, our own Parks Department would, would mention, would probably. Love to have more opportunities to, to provide more resources, uh, and services like that. But as, as with, we've mentioned previously with like the, uh, the Cypress Point, um, project, the, the county. There isn't just land just laying around all over the place that we can simply acquire and, and do what we want with. A lot of the land we have on the coast is protected. It's, uh, protected for agriculture or for other types of open space uses, so. We have to use the resources we can, we have and we can get a hold of. Maybe I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you.
I think, um, if we could, uh, okay, I started to say this before, but I was muted. Uh, if there's no objections, then it can be more, more sufficient if the Parks Director presents now and then commissioners can ask clarifying questions, which can be answered by either or both of them. Uh. Director Calderon, would you like to, uh, make your presentation now and then we can move on to questions, clarifying questions?
Uh, I, I'll defer to, uh, the commission on, on how they'd like to proceed. I, I don't have a, a PowerPoint presentation for you as much as just would like to walk you through the process that we went through to get to this point. Uh, the feedback we've received from the community and, uh, and really the, the collaboration. That is going into this project to date. But I, I, again, I'll defer to the commission on how, and council and, and, uh, Mr. Monowitz on how you'd like to proceed.
Well, I would prefer this if there are no objections. Do we need a vote or nodding heads would help? Okay.
Yeah, I concur. I think that would be a good time for the applicant to present.
Uh, absolutely. Uh, commissioners, uh, Mr. Monowitz, Mr. Fox, uh, thank you for allowing me to speak to you today. Uh, again, my name is Nicholas Calderon and I'm the director of the San Mateo County Parks Department. Uh, back in two thousand and seventeen, when the department started the, uh, planning process for the Quarry Park Pump Track. Uh, of the improvements that were identified as the most desired, uh, number one, I'm sorry, number two were. Bike trails and before were pump track and what we learned back in two thousand and seventeen and, and has only, uh, grown. Is that there's a large population on the coast side that ride bikes and that are looking for, uh, authorized uses and amenities. Uh, and so between two thousand and seventeen and, and two thousand and twenty, there was a constant call. Not just trails, but also for these pump track features. And so when in January of twenty twenty, the community built a pump track, uh, without permission. We got together with the community and, uh, I attended a community meeting, a mid-coast community council meeting that had over a hundred people in it. I, I've never seen so many people in this meeting room. They were, uh, uh, literally out the door, down the stairs. Uh, it was remarkable. It was truly, uh, the largest. Community-led effort I have ever seen on the mid-coast in almost eleven years of working with that community. And it was parents, it was kids, it was adults that ride bikes. Uh, I know there was a question earlier as to is this the, the, is this really what we should be doing here? Um, I would say first, it, we've designed this track to not just serve kids, but also to serve adults. And, um, and so this track will not just serve those under eighteen, but it'll also serve those in their twenties and thirties. And frankly, more importantly, it also creates an opportunity where parents and kids can go and have a strong family, uh, uh, family day. And, and so I do think that this is, is the right approach. Um, but when we went through the design process and we engaged with the public. And we look at the public feedback we received during the master planning process, there were, uh, really two strong messages that we heard. And that was that, uh, the community as a whole wanted a pump track and they wanted it at Quarry Park. And so, uh, that's how we, we got to where we are right now. Now, the original plan was to have this done by now and, and COVID certainly delayed that. And so when we went through our public engagement process, we, uh, gave two opportunities for people to provide feedback. One was through the virtual meeting and one was through the survey. Uh, and what, uh, the department and the public agreed upon was creating a family-friendly, safe environment that we could, uh, offer to the community. So that's how we got to, uh, uh, the point that we're at right now. I know that there have been numerous, uh, comments submitted to the commission, uh, expressing support for this project. Uh, I have worked with the mid-coast community and the mid-coast community council for over a year on this project. And, uh, the project's actually going to be funded through a collaboration of the Parks Department. The Granada Community Services District and the San Mateo County Parks Foundation. And so all three entities are putting money towards this project to build it. And that in and of itself, I believe, is a testament to how, uh, how strongly supported this project is. And, um, and, and how desired, uh, how desirable this, this amenity is. A couple of things that I know regarding parking and traffic. This track was designed specifically to be a community-serving amenity. So this is, this track does not have big jumps. This track is not a regional draw. People will not be driving from the East Bay or the South Bay or the North Bay to use this track. Because there are, uh, tracks just like this and there are bigger tracks in the East Bay and in the South Bay and in the North Bay and in the city. This is going to be a locally serving amenity, uh, and the city half of the bay will be building their own pump track, uh, in the near future. So, uh, this is something that is really going to serve residents of El Granada and Moss Beach and Montero and Miramar. Uh, and so we're excited to give people an opportunity to get out and do something new. Uh, so that they're not having to get in their car, they're not having to drive a long distance. The other, um, the other thing that I'd like to, to talk about is the location, which this location, which is, uh, pretty much relatively flat. Requires minimal, uh, site work to prepare and is not located near a drainage area or any sensitive resources. This allows us to have minimal impact, uh, in our project, but it also allows for easy access from the parking lot and the main entrance. And, uh, and so this, uh, this location is really ideal for this, uh, for this facility. It's also next to our, our courtyard, which means that we're going to be able to better maintain the track. So those are some of the issues that we've heard, uh, but we've put significant thought into, uh, into how we go about citing this and designing this and how we're going to manage this. So, uh, that's really just some of the things I wanted to talk about. Uh, I also just wanted to make myself available to answer any questions that the commissioners may have.
Thank you, Nicholas. Uh, so let's go back to Commissioner clarifying questions. Um, Commissioner Gupta.
Uh, yes, I do, uh, have questions. Uh, some of the questions were, uh, already, uh, addressed by, uh, Mr. Calderon. Um, but the question I have is, it says there are three separate skill levels on this pump track. Okay, are they separate, separated so that the, uh, harder ones are, uh, not run over by the younger kids?
Yeah, Commissioner, great question. Mike, would you be able to pull up the image of the, the design, please? Uh, and I'd be happy to, to walk you through that, uh, but the short answer, Commissioner is absolutely. So there's three different tracks. There is, uh, if you look at, uh, uh, Mike's screen. You'll see he, you'll see on the, uh, bottom side, um, uh, on the bottom. Uh, Mike, if you can just bring your cursor up a little bit and to the left. A little bit more to the perfect. That's the beginner track. So that is a, a more simple track that youth will ride. That is a more simple track, uh, that new riders will ride. And then above that in this image is the intermediate track. That's going to be for your more advanced riders, your more skilled riders. And then along the perimeter is a skills track. So that's going to be something that is ridden at a slower speed and it really hones your technical abilities. Uh, one of the best things about this, and Mike talked about it during his presentation though, is, uh, when you're at this track. It's not just about you going through it as fast as you can and, um, putting others at risk. Everyone understands that this is a community event, uh, activity or a community asset. And so, um, everyone is very conscientious of other people, but you know, I, I saw, um, the first pump track I saw was up at, um. Incline Village in Tahoe and what I saw were older kids helping younger kids ride it. Teaching younger kids how to ride it and not, you know, running them over or trying to pass them on the track, but instead encouraging them and teaching them. Uh, how to be better. And that's what we're really optimistic we're going to get here. And we've actually partnered with the Coastside Mountain Bikers, which is a group of mountain bikers that, uh, uh, range in all ages and abilities. And, uh, by talking with these riders, we know that, uh, getting younger riders interested and excited about this. And honing their skills is something that everyone's passionate about. So, um, while we're offering all these different opportunities for different skill level riders, we also know that, uh, it's going to be an opportunity for. Older and more technical riders to teach younger and newer riders, uh, how to ride both the, the, the beginner track, but also that intermediate track as well.
Great, great. Uh, so you've thought it through. Uh, what about the type of, um. Uh. Well, I don't know for, for the, for the lack of better word, like the type of, uh, uh, like skateboards or, uh. Motorized devices. Are those going to be, uh, do you expect those to go on there too? Are those going to be, do you expect those to go on there too?
We do not. This is going to be a dirt track. So this will not be compatible with skateboards. Motorized devices would be harmful to the track. So we're not going to be allowing those. So this is really going to be for for bicycles.
Okay. And and how do you plan to enforce this, these measures? I saw those, there's also advisory signage out there for the safety of the riders there. What is being done?
Yeah, there's really going to be a couple ways. First is is the signage, as you indicated. Second is through staffing. So so Parks Department staff will monitor behavior at the site and will make sure that everyone's acting accordingly. And third is going to be what I would call community enforcement. So other riders have to hold, you know, riders have to hold other riders accountable. And we have found that in other pump tracks, either in Santa Cruz, in Marin County, that people understand having these types of amenities is really a privilege. And so you have to be responsible in how you use them and how you behave and how you act. And so we do find elsewhere that riders do keep riders accountable and that that is an effective means of of keeping behavior the way we want.
Okay. So so typically, I'm assuming that they are open seven days a week, right? And so so there'll be staff there even on the weekends to kind of monitor the behavior?
Yeah, so the San Mateo County Parks are open seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. And and I have staff on every day during operating hours. Now, staff is typically not stationed at one specific location for the entire day because we have, you know, we have about fifty-five rangers for sixteen thousand acres of land and twenty-four parks. So they they rove around. When we first open this, we will have someone who is there monitoring behavior, making sure that everyone understands the rules. And over time, that stationary position will go to a roving position and come and go as needed.
Okay, all right. Thank you. And so the pedestrian trains are nowhere near it, not not around the Trump Track, correct?
So there, so
Pump track, yeah.
Yeah. So if you look on the left-hand side of that that bold dotted line, you'll see something that says gravel path where Mike's his cursor. That is a fire road right now that some pedestrians will use, but that bold dotted line is a fence. So we don't foresee there being any issues. And because the part, the track is located where it is, it's not going to conflict with existing hiking trails.
Okay, okay. Yeah, because I've been to not not these pump tracks, but places where pedestrians and bicyclists are sharing kind of same path. And it's a total confusion there because pedestrians walk slower, bikes go faster. And you don't know whether you should move left or you should move right as you are walking on those trains. So I'm glad to hear that. Thank you. And one more thing that I would like to commend our planner on is the pictures of a pump track. I had no idea. I'm a senior citizen. I have no idea of what these pump tracks really, really look like and what they are used for. So this, this is great. Thank you.
Commissioner Hansen.
Looking at the pictures that was provided in Michael's presentation, got me to think about the that one, yes, particularly. I didn't see any discussion about parking. I presume, you know, looking age of this, we're going to talk about a lot of cars with bringing their kids and bicycles to this. I don't think this is a normal everyday experience, but what are, what is the parking impact on the lot? I mean, is it adequate? Is are there going to be times we would expect overflow in this community or what?
Yeah, Commissioner, great question. So we are going to be adding probably ten to twelve parking spaces at the park.
In addition, what is there?
In addition to what is there right now. So we'll be moving, there's a gate that will be moving back and we'll have to do some removal of some eucalyptus trees to to rock that area for a parking area. Yeah, so we'll be pushing the parking lot up where Mike's cursor is. So we will be adding parking there. And we are evaluating other opportunities along the fringe of Quarry Park to add even more parking. So so we're going to be adding parking regardless, just because it was something that was asked for during the master planning process.
Your intention is for the eighty, ninety percent of the time that all the parking could be handled within your jurisdiction?
Yeah, I mean, I I don't know if I would put a percentage to it. What I know is that a lot of the people who are going to be using this ride their bike to park, right? So as we talked about, this is a local serving amenity, meaning it's serving the local community. People are, you know, kids will ride their bike there, ride the track, ride home. And so, you know, we are very optimistic that with the parking we have on site right now and the parking that we're going to be adding, that that's not going to be an issue.
That was my question. Thank you.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Yeah, actually, just answer my question. What I was going to ask, it was also about parking. So thanks.
I have a couple of questions. I guess the first one is for Mr. Schaller. On condition of approval number two, it says site grading and trail development activities shall be restricted between May one and December thirty-one. So has a word been left out? Should that say restricted to between May one and December thirty-one?
Let me apologize. I don't have my report right in front of me. Let me pull that.
In other words, construction must occur between May one and not, not the opposite. You're trying to avoid the rainy season, but it sounds like it shall be restricted between. I mean, it says it shall be restricted between May one.
Yeah, I think you're correct. The intent was to since this is basically a grading project to use this, the same language we typically use for if somebody were doing a grading project for a home, we generally we generally restrict grading during the rainy seasons that you're not, you shouldn't do grading in in the rainy season unless you get an exception from the planning director.
Yeah. So basically, this is restricting it during the dry season. So just add, add, you know, that's all.
Okay, I think we'll have to correct that.
And then related question, is there some reason why this is extended till December thirty-one into the wet season as though that's okay?
You know, I think actually I was most of those, those recommended conditions of approval came from the biological report that was prepared for the Quarry Park master planning process. So I I carried over those recommended conditions from 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 that report. So typically I mean, I can't find.
I was just supposing that this would come from the winter grading wording, which is starts in October, doesn't it?
I you know, I I would have, I'll have to go back and double check. I actually have not paid attention to when the exact starting date. It used to be middle of September, but we may have moved to October first, simply because.
It's not December thirty-first. I just want to point that out.
Okay, well, we can double check and clarify those dates so that they are consistent with our our standard grading conditions about restriction of of grading during winter season.
Okay, my other question is probably for Nicholas, pump track activity sound level. Now, could you characterize the type of sounds one might hear from a pump track use? I mean, I'm assuming the the bikes on the dirt track won't make any noise themselves. And so, you know, and this would be a situation that's not like if you had a basketball court, you're going to hear all the basketball noise or skateboards, you hear that. So if you could, because I know some neighbors are concerned about noise and if you could characterize this.
Yeah, you're going to hear, frankly, you're going to hear people talking and kids having fun. You're not going to hear the bike. You're not going to hear, we're not allowing amplified music. Can hear people having fun and and kids having a good time and and families getting together. That's that's the noise you're going to hear. But you already have the playground that is closer to the residential structures, right? So you already have a play structure where kids are going to play, where kids are running around and screaming and having a good time. So, you know, given the proximity of the track to the nearest homes, you're not going to hear anything that you're not already hearing.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, of course.
So let me see, we kind of were out of our, Commissioner Santa Cruz, do you have any additional questions since we changed the order of this?
It's okay. I have a couple of questions for Mr. Calderon. Mr. Calderon, is this the first pump track in the Granada area?
This is, is, this will be the first publicly available pump track in the El Granada area. So some people, private ones in their backyard or in their front yards, this will be the first publicly available pump track.
Okay. And you said that it came out as a result of the need for a survey or something that it was conducted for the El Granada City Hall or something, right?
Yeah. So to be clear, it was identified as a top priority in the Quarry Park Master Plan Process. It was also identified as a priority in the Granada Community Services District's Park and Rec Needs Assessment. So it's been identified a couple of times as a top priority for residents of the mid-coast.
Okay. And do you have any soccer field in El Granada that you are aware of?
Do we as a San Mateo County Parks Department or any?
In El Granada, in in that area.
At the school.
Is there a soccer field there?
For a public, public supporter, like a soccer field that people can go and and have fun to?
Yeah, according to Commissioner Ketchen, there might be one at the school. I I'm not familiar with that one, though.
Actually, there was an upgrade of the playfields at the El Granada Elementary School that used mid-coast park and rec funding to upgrade that field because that's the place where people play on the weekends.
Okay, okay, great. Yeah, that's it. Thank you very much for the adding explanation.
Yeah, if I maybe have one other thing to your original question. Pump tracks are a very popular amenity, really for everyone. So we went through a process to design a new park at Flood Park in Menlo Park. And the Bulldog Riders, which is a youth group out in North Fair Oaks, asked for, repeatedly asked for a pump that they would be able to have access to. So this is certainly something that serves people of all demographics and backgrounds.
Well, yeah, my concern is the initial that I stated to the to the staff member who presented that less than, less than twenty-eight percent of that population in El Granada is twenty-five percent or younger. And out of that, the racial composition is like one percent black and fourteen percent Latinos. So, you know, I just trying to see the needs of like this pump track when it comes to racially diverse population that it will be participating and and investment on on enjoying that investment to to build the pump track. That's that's my only concern on that. But that's it. Just have to say. But thank you.
I'd like to move on now to open public comment and I'll turn this portion of the meeting over to Ms. Luhan.
Give me one second while I we are now opening public comment for item number two. If your hand is raised, your name will be called for this item. I will lower your hand after you speak. For those joining by phone can press star nine to raise or unraise your hand. And you will have two minutes or two minutes or five minutes, actually five minutes on the clock. And I only see one at the moment. So let's give it a couple more seconds while I get the timer up and see if more hands go up. Okay, I do see three hands raised. So I will first call on the first hand, which is Rick Barker. Rick, please accept his invitation. Unmute your microphone and begin speaking.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is Rick Barker. I'm a El Granada resident. I'm also a active bike rider and I am active in the mountain bike and bicycling community. I really want to thank you for your time in looking over these and all of your questions are great questions. The the age one and the racial the demographic of people and socioeconomic diversity of this project, those are all great questions. First of all, pump tracks, I'm, I am in my fifties. I am enjoying riding mountain bikes later in my years now. And I think there are a lot of people that ride bikes in the community that would enjoy being able to use this as an exercise opportunity for not just twenty-somethings, but into their fifties and sixties. I know quite a few grandparents that would be able to ride this that that ride now currently. And yeah, as far as noise and location, I think the county parks and Granada Services District has reached out for for years now, working on this project to get feedback from the neighborhood and to work within the neighborhood and the community to listen to all the different viewpoints as far as where it should be. I think its location within the county parks, park there is is perfect and adjacent to the bathrooms and parking and visibility as well. So I I believe that's my statement for now. I'm just issuing my support for this project. Thank you.
Thanks for your comment. I will next call on Mike Zoglio, followed by Thomas DeMeo. Mr. Zoglio, please accept his invitation. Unmute your microphone and begin speaking.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for offering the opportunity to comment on this. I actually have the exact opposite opinion as that previously presented. I feel like this is a project that has been pushed forward by the vocal minority. We have not done a factual analysis of many of the things that the committee has asked about. I happen to live on two-two-two El Granada Boulevard, which has a view of this, will also hear all of the noise that comes from it. I can invite anyone to the home to hear what the noise already sounds like on weekends, especially with the pandemic, it has become almost intolerable to sit outside. This will only exacerbate this problem. And as a result, we definitely do not support it. One other thing I would love to see is a parking analysis. I think it's optimistic to think that everyone will ride their bikes to a pump track. We actually know that most people don't ride their bikes to Quarry Park because it's situated in a very hilly area. And so people typically do not want to ride down the hill, spend an hour or two on a pump track and then ride back up the hill or walk up the hill. We've already got really bad traffic problems. It's not just related to that overflow area and the parking lot. People park up and down El Granada Hill, El Granada Boulevard on a regular basis today to enjoy Quarry Park, to do mountain biking, whether that's legal or on their illegal trails, which they've been building. And we've actually seen in a number of occasions, people in the neighborhood almost assaulted over parking disputes where people had parked in front of their house, left a bunch of trash, et cetera. We think this will only create even more problems for the immediate area. And as stated before, believe that this is really being pushed through by people who do not actually live near this area and obviously live in the the location, but will not actually be affected directly by this. I think it's naive to I think it's naive to think that people will not come over from the peninsula, even if they have their own pump track to check this out. And again, we'll just increase traffic in an area which is already just ridiculously overstressed by the traffic situation that we have there. So thank you. If you guys have any questions for me, again, we live very close to the area, spent a lot of time in the park, actually have spent a lot less time in the park in the last year because we're afraid for to get injured by all the mountain biking and the illegal mountain biking that's happening, which perhaps points to the question someone asked earlier about how we will police this pump track or how the park is currently being policed, which in our opinion is not adequate. Thank you.
Thanks for your comment. I will next call on Thomas De Mail. Thomas, please accept his invitation, unmute your microphone and begin speaking.
Thank you for taking my 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 comments. I'm Thomas De Mail. I live in the Miramar area. I often use Quarry Park. I'm also a cyclist in my fifties, again, enjoying cycling to staff. And as a father of a couple of daughters who are also cyclists, skills is probably then the number one and most important thing to kind of teach children and cycling riders. It helps them not just in their kind of, you know, regular riding, not just on mountain biking, but on road. And, you know, there are accidents that happen. And so from a skill development standpoint, having a reliable, predictable, safe place to develop skills for not just ourselves, but also our children becomes super important, really to avoid accidents downstream. I, this is not a unique pump track. I've used other pump tracks when we were living in a different area of Santa Cruz. And this is something that is kind of a common amenity. I think, you know, in the older days, it used to be in a basketball and baseball courts, but those in in football, but frankly, that's not what kind of the younger demographics are looking for now. So the pump track, I think, is something that, again, from a skill development to avoid accidents is also super valuable. I've never ridden, I've never driven, I should say, with a car over to Quarry Park. Again, this is kind of a kind of hard to find park if you're not from the area. There are other parks, pump tracks around, as other people mentioned, so I don't think people are going to be going out of their way to find this park, which isn't the biggest, it isn't the greatest, it's this, you know, it's this kind of a local amenity. So I think that makes a lot of sense as well. As mentioned before, from a proximity standpoint, it's already next to facilities, whether it be parking, an existing park, as some have mentioned, that's already, you know, there's already getting usage and 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 noise. So I don't think from an incremental standpoint, this is a brand new area that's a, you know, virgin territory. This is something that's already kind of leverages the infrastructure that's already in place, which is great. And again, I think from a local amenity standpoint, this is not a unique thing. I know that some folks aren't familiar with it, but it is kind of more of a common, it's kind of the modern day baseball or basketball court, if you will, and I think provides a good amenity for the local residents. Thank you for, you know, looking and having all these questions. And that is the last of my comments. I'll yield back my time.
Thank you. We will now have Fran Pollard. Ms. Pollard, please unmute your mic and begin speaking.
Hi, can I ask a question first before you start timing me?
Sure, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, well, I'm asking, did everyone get my letter? I sent a letter yesterday, and I've, I'm not sure, I haven't heard any. Anybody ask a question for my letter? I gave a lot of reason, a lot of other ideas or issues that are here right now that we already have to contend with. Did anyone get my letter?
Do you like to read your letter?
Well, it's kind of long, so and I don't have, I can't get it now. I didn't print it out, so I don't have it. The screen takes up the whole thing and I can't find my letter now. But I I can remember most of it, so I I'll make some points, I guess. But did anyone, did, did the commissioners get my letter? That's my question.
Do we get the letter, Janet?
Yes, ma'am.
Fran Pollard.
Yes.
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Okay, well, all right, then I I will just make the points. We have a lot going on in this park area already. We, as, as I've been here fifty years, five oh. I helped save this community. My husband and I saved the quarry from being quarried when we got here in nineteen seventy one. And we saved it to protect it. We and worked twenty five years to create the little community park, which is where the tot lot is, the little playground area on that was shown on the map over in the right hand bottom corner. So that's just little kids playing, and that doesn't bother anybody. And but on the, that's on the right side of the road to the quarry. Now, on the left side is where they want to put it in the meadow. I, all I object to is that site. It's on a beautiful pristine meadow, which is, by the way, agricultural land. It's in the documents. I've witnessed it being farmed while I've lived here in all in the seventies. It was, there's a community garden at the end of it, and it's thriving. What we have now are mountain bikers that come all the time with cars and trucks. They don't just ride in. We, nobody's taken a survey to find out if they're local or not. So they they take up a lot of space. The parking lot is very small and inadequate. I've been after the county for years since the park has been opened up, since the county took it over. And allowing all this mountain biking, there's mountain biking, there's people walking in with with children and dogs. There's people riding bikes in, cars and trucks maneuvering to get the parking spaces. And already, it's all, all the overflow is around our houses. By the way, they didn't show, they were showing on the map all how it was screened from the El Granada Boulevard, but they didn't show the street, the homes across the street from it, which is where I live and where we're impacted constantly with overflow parking, even if the parking lot isn't full. People park in front of our houses because they don't want to park in the parking lot. That I don't understand. Anyway, so there's already mountain biking, which is, which has compounded the the traffic that comes in here. And and the, so this, this pump track is going to compound things. You saw that picture with the crowd of people. That's probably the way it's going to be for, at least for a while, until all these other pump tracks get built, which I wonder. And that, and people come here from all over the Bay Area, so I don't know what's going to stop them from coming here for the pump track, even if they have other ones. They like to go around and find other places. So we've got the pump track, walkers, hikers, bikers, children, small children, parents bringing them in strollers or walking them down the street, competing with cars and traffic, and not enough parking. It all is in front of our homes when there's overflow, and there was no mention of that. Our, the first choice of the proponents of this, and my choice, is Marata Surf East. It's wide open spaces. It's got highway access. It's next to El Granada School. It, there's no trees there. It can, it's a perfect spot for this and a logical spot. And the kids can just go right from school right over to it. They don't have to ride through the community. That was my other point, that everybody that comes here from, from in the community or outside the community has to ride through the entire community to get to this one section. It's the only main access road that this whole community is surrounded. I mean, the park is surrounded by the whole community. And everyone has to drive through the entire town to get to this entrance. And it's really hazard dangerous and and nerve wracking for all of us that live here when we originally had a quiet little community to live in. And now, this, this is, so I just object to that. I have a better spot is further a few yards down from where this is, where they located on the other side of the road, which is down below. That part of the meadow is on a hill. So when they construct it, if there's ever floods again, it's going to wash down and ruin the road and and wash down on our community. It it's possible. And I don't think that that yellow square that was in there is an accurate depiction of the size of it. It takes up, I think, takes up most of that hill and that side of the meadow. So that's why I object to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, and I do not see any more hands raised for this item. Chair.
Okay, seeing there are no additional members in the public who wish to speak, public comment on this item is now closed. Does staff wish to speak to any of the issues raised?
Not at this point, Chair Ketchum. We're available for questions.
Right, so we'll move on now to Commissioner's comments and deliberation, and we'll start with Commissioner Santa Cruz.
Okay, um, I hear concern, my, my main concern, as she said, is the fact that we're talking about a survey that was presented in El Granada. And from the survey, which not so actually, it's not so factually analyzed. They didn't talk about issues that neighbor that presented that they're experiencing the issue in that park is are experiencing that problem. Like I said initially, without hearing the concern in pro or in favor of this report, that I see that the survey was not, doesn't include any factual findings and problems about parking and noises and not including a diverse racially diverse population that enjoyed that type of sport, rather than using this money for for the pump track. I I don't see any need, and as a commissioner, we need to hear the point of view of the constituents and the people who live in the area that I, that they feel that they are affected by it. So I'm not really happy about this project.
Sorry, Commissioner Gupta.
We have received overwhelming support from, from the neighbors and residents in our correspondence. And it's, to me, it looks like a cool idea. We are bringing, bringing activities to, to what I would call bringing modern day amenities for the, for, I wouldn't say kids. If it's three separate skill levels, it's all the way from kids to people over fifty. I wouldn't go any higher than that. So I I think it's, it's a good project, parking. Over time, I understand from Director Calderon that they are looking at adding parking elsewhere along the Quarry Park also. And, and, and I would encourage that to happen. So, so I, I support the project. Thank you.
Commissioner Hanson.
Considering the timeline on this concept, it definitely shows demonstrated to myself that this is not a fad. This is something that is in demand. And, you know, it's always then, where do you put it? I think you found a natural area and place where it balances the whole coast side community on a very nice location. I don't know if it's the most ideal spot Fran said, Pollard had some ideas where it might be better. That's not being presented here as an alternative, but it's still, I think, overall, the quarry area is a good place for this. I think that like you demonstrated, there is a need for it. I would have liked to have seen some traffic analysis, but after twenty years too, you know, people are demanding it and are wondering why we're not getting to it. So I would like to move forward on this, give my support.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Thank you for the opportunity to put my two cents into this. I, I want to commend both Mr. Cheller and Mr. Calderon for their presentation. I am very much in favor of this project. I believe that it's good to see that the county is finally paying attention to the different communities and the different needs that there are across the different unincorporated areas of the county. I think that, just as Mr. Hanson said a moment ago, I think that the community was vetted thoroughly, and there was ample participation. And I believe that if there was that much opposition, we would have seen more people here at this meeting, and this, that's what these meetings are for, to let people come and you know, when these decisions are about to be made. So with that, I commend the county for finally coming along and providing this amenity that I I believe is highly needed. I rather see kids in in an area where they can go and it's safe for them to be practicing their skills, to hone their skills, so that then later can go up into the, into the hills, into the mountains where they can go bike riding. The concern is a little bit about the parking, but I do believe that based on, you know, what I've seen friends that I have, people like to ride when, you know, on, to go biking. So since this is for the community, I don't expect that people are going to come from, you know, every once in a while, I'm sure a few people may come around, but this is the community. They, I think they will come in their bikes to hone their skills on this facility. So with that, I am going to say that I am in total support.
I too support this project. I think that the parking, some additional parking should be added. I don't know how much, but I think, but the neighborhood is very difficult to park along the street. The shoulders are not generally level and available, so and there is space on the property there to put parking that's permeable surface or whatever you can figure out. But anyway, I support the project. So if staff has any additional things to say, are we, okay, um, may I have a motion?
I'm ready to make the motion. The Planning Commission approves the coastal development permit, county file number PLN twenty twenty one dash zero 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 ninety six by adopting the required findings and conditions of approval contained in attachment E.
A second, ma'am.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gupta.
I.
Commissioner Santa Cruz.
No.
Commissioner Hanson.
I.
Commissioner Ramirez.
I.
Your catch up.
I.
Thank you. Motion passes.
So the project, so the motion is approved four to one with Santa Cruz opposed, and thank you all. Now move on to the director's portion of the meeting.
Yes, thank you, Chair Ketchum. The only correspondents that have come in were, was with regard to the items that you heard today, so I'll move on to study session for next meeting. We're not currently recommending a study session. We have a proposed subdivision of a sixty eight or sixty acre lot into three residential parcels off Parrot Drive on the agenda, and that's a somewhat controversial item that I expect will take a while. So we'll keep it at that item for next meeting.
Is that Parrot Drive up there in Samatail Hillsborough area?
Yes, that's correct. Yes, that's correct. So the other things I have to report to you today have to do with some things that have occurred over the course of the past few weeks when we haven't met. As some of you may know, I've issued a notice regarding hazardous tree exemptions, permit exemptions. This is based on correspondence that I received from CAL FIRE that identified that due to our current drought and climate conditions, that they've declared specific types of trees in specific locations to be a fire hazard. So based on that declaration, I have informed property owners within the county that no permit is required to remove the types of trees that CAL FIRE has declared as hazardous. So our hope is that that will facilitate the fire hazard clearance needs that currently exist. And we're addressing that on multiple fronts. So in addition to this notice of exemption, we've been working with the Resource Conservation District on a public works plan that they have submitted to the California Coastal Commission, which will allow people who work with the Resource Conservation District to do fire, fire clearance projects. They will be, also be exempt from permitting requirements. So a lot of action going on to prepare for the current fire season. Couple of board actions that occurred over the past couple of weeks, including an amendment to the Big Wave Development Agreement. The, the changes to the development agreement were determined by me to be minor in nature and not requiring an amendment to the coastal development permit. But because Big Wave is in contract with the county under this development agreement, changes to that agreement do have to go before the board. And they, those changes were unanimously approved. If you have any questions about those, I'd be happy to answer them on a one-on-one conversation or today, if you like. For the upcoming Board of Supervisors meeting, the department is asking the board to allow us to increase the amount of an existing contract we have with a company named Fourleaf. As you may know, the department's been extremely busy and struggling to keep up with permit application volume. And so we have been making use of some contract services to try and stay up to speed. And therefore, we're asking for the board's permission to put more resources to that. This is occurring during a time when we have a number of vacancies within the department that we're actively recruiting for. So this is just a temporary fix while we get our new permanent employees hired and trained, which I'm looking forward to and we're making good progress on in that regard. I'm pleased to announce that we have a new building official in the department who started about three weeks ago. His name is Fred Lustenberger and is a great addition to our team that will, I think, really enhance our ability to improve our customer service. Also, with regard to improving customer service, I've been keeping you updated on our on, online permit system upgrade. And I'm pleased to report that the fourth, fourth release of the upgrade is scheduled to occur, to occur at the end of this month. And with this upgrade, you will be able to apply for essentially any type of residential development that you would like to pursue, including submitting a permit for a brand-new house all through our online portal. So this is a very significant step for the department and I'd like to congratulate my team on their efforts in this regard. Finally, I, I think it's probably on many of our minds what our public meetings might look like in the future. We've talked about this before. What I can tell you in that regard is the governor's action to set aside certain requirements of the Brown Act during the pandemic, that's set to expire at the end of September. So where we go from there is still a work in progress. Obviously, we are going to be looking to what the Board of Supervisors does and take some cues from them. And as we approach this September 30th day, we will have more information for you commissioners about what to expect in the beginning of October. So that concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions, Steve? I commend you on everything that you are doing in these trying times. One suggestion that I have is that any of these new staff that's joining, if we are going to be interfacing with them on the commission, it would be good to kind of get introduced to them briefly at any of our meetings, if they can be made, made to be there.
Yes, agreed. And, you know, the building official is a unique position in that it oversees all the activities of our department related to the building permit process. And as you know, that typically follows a planning commission decision. So taking, for example, Item 1 today, where the commission approved a coastal development permit for the project. Now that applicant will need to get their building permit from the building department. And that's when Fred's team will kind of take the lead in processing as opposed to planning. It's very rare that building permit issues come before the planning commission. But I would say, in respect of your point, Commissioner Gupta, the building official plays a lot of roles in addition to overseeing the building permit process. He often is the first person to respond to some sort of disaster where we need an expert in the field to determine whether or not conditions are hazardous. He's our floodplain manager, so he's responsible for ensuring that the county's permitting actions are consistent with FEMA flood regulations and so forth. So he does play a really important role and I think it would be appropriate for him to be introduced to the commission in person. And so we will make that happen.
Thank you. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Any questions?
I have a question, if I may, to Steve. Steve, I remember about two or three meetings ago, you were asked for an OR chart of your department. I wondered if I could have a copy of that. If, if it is too much of a hassle, I would like to have like that, sort of like an ethnic, like a racial breakdown for, for the OR chart?
I'm happy to provide an OR chart. As far as racial breakdown, that gets a little difficult and sensitive. So why don't we start with the OR chart and then I'll see what I can do to answer any question.
If you can, if you can send a hard copy, it would be better for me, okay? Thank you very much.
Certainly.
Any Commissioner updates or questions?
But I, I have a question following up on what Steve just brought up as far as the, the sobbing out and continuing with the extending the contract. So how, how do you normally continue to monitor what the, what those people are doing as far as the plan checking? And I bring this up because I know it has come up to my attention that some people have had issues with those plan checkers and they find it difficult to communicate with the county directly about some of the issues that are happening on some of their projects.
Yes, thanks, Commissioner Ramirez. Really, I, I'll take that as two questions. First, with regard to the contractors. And then second, with regard to difficulty communicating with the department. Because I think they are somewhat related, but really independent questions. So, you know, many of the folks that work for Fourleaf that were able to get to help us out under contract have worked with other jurisdictions doing similar things and are familiar with our systems. Some are not so familiar. So we have to provide more hands-on training. But we've really expanded our use of the contractors since we came back to the office, at least on a hybrid schedule, beginning June 15th. So the contract technicians that we have are primarily working in the office under the oversight of a supervisor or manager so that they're getting the training and making, we're making sure they're doing the work that needs to happen. That's primarily with regard to intake and distribution of projects. Plan review is a certain stage of the application processing where we have an engineered or a qualified professional really dig through the plans to make sure it's all put together to code. And we have in-house plan reviewers and we also have outside contract plan reviewers. And, you know, that contract help we've been using for many years and really is essential to our business workflow. I, I think the challenges of communicating with the department during the pandemic and during the time at which we've built up a backlog has many different factors. One of them being that many people have chosen to use email as the method of communicating with the department rather than, you know, making an appointment to come into the office, which is available now. And that email volume that comes into the office is 24/7, 365 days and has really swamped our staff in terms of their ability to keep permits processing and also be responsive to folks who have all sorts of questions. The other factor of that is it's much different than a personal interaction that starts and ends. It becomes a loop of email exchanges that can kind of be never-ending. The other thing is, yeah, just, I would say the demand for our services has overwhelmed our resources. And so I, I'm not putting that forward as an excuse because we are taking many actions to try and address this. We are taking a fresh look at the methods by which we are answering our phones to make sure that our customers can get in touch with a live human being when they need to during business hours. And that has been one of the challenges we faced in the past. But just over the course of the past few weeks, we're, we've taken action to try and address that problem as well as many other actions. So I don't want to belabor the point other than to recognize that this has been a legitimate concern, one that has been brought to my attention and one that we are actively working to fix.
Okay, well, that's great to hear that. Thank you. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Does anybody else have Commissioner updates, questions? Seeing no further business, the meeting is now adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you. See you guys.
Bye-bye.
Yeah, bye.